Alrighty, so I guess this is me live as of right now. What's up everyone? Uh, thank you guys for tuning in. Thank you guys for watching. Hey, what's up? I didn't even know, this is like my first time uh actually trying to uh schedule. Tell me how like the audio sounds and like everything else cuz I just wanna make sure I'm not like uh... Oh, that's why I'm hearing myself double. I was like, what the hell? I have myself in the background. Hey, what's up? Good morning! Yeah, once you guys give me like the say-so, basically saying my audio is good, I can get um kinda started on what my like overall goal is for today. Um, hopefully everyone is doing okay and hopefully everyone is doing alright. I'm right now, I'm just trying to uh look in my older patches cuz I'm just trying to um... Trying to find actual like patch notes cuz I'm gonna just use this as a basis for today. Um, as I finish some stuff. Alright, so there we go. Sounds good. Can you do how to make Hen offline? Uh, for the PlayStation home client, as much as I would love to have like something for offline users, the way how home boots is for um, or how it boots is from actual like App Home and it's booting from the PC itself, so um, the way how it works, you need either a debug unit or a like a development unit or something like on Rebug Dex. But right now, uh since we already got like seven people in here, what I'm gonna do is go ahead and toggle to the space or I could just, whatchamacallit. Before we even toggle to the space where I'm like showcasing to work on, or I already did most of the work for it, so I'm just basically showing you. Uh, I'll show you what I did for other patches, so... Patch 1.29 and 1.28, like hold on, just to make it a little bit bigger so you guys could see. I'll just ha- have my desktop. So um, via right here, the last patch uh I released three days ago. Um, well, actually my team helped me on this one, but uh Acorn Meadows got its original screen links fixed. Pixel Junk got its original screen links fixed and uh SCE Home Square version 3. So that was for patch 1.29 and then uh 1.28, I fixed the audio files to uh Little Big Planet Playground. So I guess I could show you guys that if y'all guys are interested, if you're using either the PS3 or RPCS3 client. Uh, but for today's main focus, we're gonna be looking at Namco Theater. Um, just trying to figure out if, what other spaces that possibly we can fix with screen links and then uh just start from there. So... Let me just go into Acorn Meadows really quick and then we'll go to Pixel Junk and then I'll just show it really quick. So I think the one we fixed was just a regular version. Hey, hey everyone. When does home add online? I'ma get it. Oh yeah, so basically um, online is being worked on like every day and uh with online, there's like no ETA since uh it's dealing with reverse engineering and stuff. But I can say this, um, online can, well quote-unquote, happen faster if we get the right data. So what I mean by that is if people donate like really old cache data from PlayStation home, so anything like builds under like 1.30 and so, uh, then we can like analyze the data, me and my team. And it can help us stuff with not just only restoring like spaces and like uh, you know, all of that like items. Um, it helps us via with like screen links, AKA like what I'm doing right now, helping to get like original posters and XMLs which can help, you know, set up the server itself. Cuz the overall goal is to try to restore um, home's functionality from scratch. Uh, but this was one of the patches that a guy named Splice did in our server. He uh found like the original Acorn Meadow um posters and he just placed them all over the whole space, which is pretty cool. So that's basically just Acorn Meadows. It's the same stuff. And then Pixel Junk actually, their servers or at least their content servers are still up. So uh, we got the ability to archive all of the original uh screen link stuff. So that includes like the original videos, the posters that belongs in the space, which is pretty cool. So yeah, it's Pixel Junk Exhibition and this was like, I know this was in Japan home as well. Hey, what's up, V Fox? And thank you guys for all the likes and uh viewers cuz I know usually every time I stream home, I did it randomly and I never really have a set uh date, but I tried something out different. Um, but here's the Pixel Junk Exhibition. Um... What I could also do probably in a later patch is restore all of the mini-games or not mini-games, but like the interactive items because I did find all of them a while back. So basically um, right here, you could just click on the stuff, but all of the audio and stuff works for the space. What's up, Elementso? Um, I even found like the original store that will go here. So if you walk up to it, the store will actually pop up, but it's really no use since uh the store has to connect to PSN. But yeah, but Pixel Junk did get its screen links restored. And then uh, last thing I'm gonna show really, really quickly is SCE Home Square. The version 3, so that was like the last ver- well, excuse me, that wasn't the last version, version 4. Oh, what's up, from El Paso, Texas? That's what's up Orbit. Thanks for joining. And then um, all of the, one of the last versions of home, there's just uh... Splice did this too. It was kind of like a one-on-one creation of just a PlayStation home logo, just plastered around and I think like towards the end of home, they just basically had the home logo plastered along the whole space. Uh, and this was for the European region of home. Really, from Turkey? Yeah, version 4 is Shark. Um, I don't, I mean, I like all versions of Home Square. I wish we had a version 4 unless we somehow find a version 4 that is like pre-beta of 1.83 somehow and we can crack it, then yeah, we can probably add that. Hey, what's up, Rich? Hopefully you're doing good. Um, but yeah, this is version 3. And uh, version 3 was actually ported, or not really, I shouldn't say ported, but it was utilized in Asian home. For Hen and Kex, the offline client uh is not viable due to like basically... Hen and Kex, the way how it works, you need a, well, to launch into offline home, you need a development console, AKA something that's on Rebug or like an actual like debug kit. Um, because when you launch a .self on a, or basically it will try to read from App Home PlayStation home. That's like the easiest way I can explain it. If we had a crack for Shark, Shark is still being looked into for the internal team, but like the primary focus and I do, this is even for me saying this too, um, the internal team for Destination Home been way more focusing on the online segment. I'm basically like, there's some other people too as well, I shouldn't say just me. Uh, but I still work on offline just for like, you know, the community and just, you know, giving something for you guys to see in the meantime. But of the main focus for like the path, well, it's always been the main focus, but... The, basically the main focus for us was to always focus on uh PlayStation home. The online segment, which is doing pretty much good as of right now, but there's nothing like physically we could show to you guys yet as in a showcase. And our goal is to get into like lobby. Oh, really? That's cool. Yeah, well, Shark even though like the, the main thing like for us though, in terms of like Shark encryption, yeah, is very important to us since that can allow us to unlock all files. But um, getting into a lobby is like the primary goal cuz we've already initialized quote-unquote online, like the very first segments. And uh, we already figured out a lot of the ins and outs via for like how spaces can run and stuff, so... I don't wanna get in too much detail cuz uh, you know, it's confidential. I don't wanna say too much, but there is um... Primary stuff. Uh, but here is Namco Theater. I've already done basically the work, uh, even though I was gonna showcase it a little bit later. Uh, but these are all of the original screen links. My friend Kyle, um, he basically looked in old people's cache data and um, we couldn't find the original Ridge Racer one. So what I did here was use some YouTube version of Ridge Racers, uh, Seven's like uh intro or not even intro, but just like a preview of it. So that's got playing Tekken 7, or not Tekken 7, excuse me, but we got a Tekken video playing, I guess for Tekken 6 for the PSP and as well, um, we have the other game here, which is like Soul. I forgot what it's called. I think Soul Calibur. So all of that is getting placed in today's patch as well. So yeah, that's pretty much done for Namco Theater. Um, but what I'm gonna do now is... I'm gonna go ahead and, whatchamacallit? I'm gonna go and make the patch right now. I haven't done that part yet cuz I have to figure out where I've placed it. So I know it's in Environment, so I need to go ahead and create a folder for that. But right now, I'm gonna just go through like mad spaces or you guys could ask me if you know like how the Destination Home client is. If you know um, basically what spaces are ma- missing screen links, I could try to basically uh fix that today. And uh, yes, this only works for like either hacked PlayStation 3s or jailbroken consoles or actual debug units or like development reference tools. But you could also use the RPCS3 emulator to play the offline client. Um, I'm using an actual PlayStation 3 though cuz my PC's quite trash. Even though I really wish I could um, whatchamacallit, utilize, let me see. Actually utilize, I can't even think, the emulator itself. I'm trying to see really quick video. Nope, I think it's in BNG Carrot 7 or 6. I don't even know where I placed this at, so I gotta look in the local scene list cuz that will kinda help me. Cuz I know with Namco spaces, uh, they kinda share the same folder, so... Right now, I'm just looking. So Namco Theater is in something called Playmax 2, which now it makes sense. Um... Playmax PPP. Alright, so there we go right here. Um... And I gotta look in the dot scene, so... Screen links is in BNG Carrot 7 like I thought. Okay, so I wasn't going crazy. I just wanted to verify so I won't like make a mistake, so this folder. So Environment, BNG Carrot. Um, Screen Content, Video. And then in here, I don't know what I have for images though. I don't think I've utilized it. I could try to toggle it, but I'm not. Yeah, that's just for something else. And Screen Links, Round Video LCD. Yeah, this all set for offline, so... What kind of graphics card you will, you need to be um running on the RPCS3? I think most people use like GTX 1050s, but don't hold me to that. The best way and I'll kinda actually uh... I'll send you like the RPCS3's um quick start or kind of like compatibility. Um, the best way is just to go off their recommended settings, but even with the RPCS3 client, the way how um PlayStation home is and just generally how emulators are, RPCS3 I know has some graphical um issues with. So it all do really depends down on what type of rig you have and if you have like the correct graphics card that is quote-unquote the best. So the best way to, to be honest, is to play PlayStation home is on actual hardware. Cuz I know even with all of the fixes that uh Destination Home or basically the Destination Home team tried to patch for RPCS3, um... The emulator itself will still have some issues when certain spaces and playing certain mini-games and stuff. Like there may be like screen ripping, um, just any general graphical or like audio implications you may run into. So that's just something uh to be wary of, I should say. The reason why I would like to play on RPCS3 um to make patches easier and it would be just way much easier to record and stuff cuz sometimes like before even was trying to livestream, literally in like five minutes, until like five minutes ago, uh, my audio to the PlayStation 3 wasn't running and it was pretty trash. So yeah. Hey, what's up, RiggaWriglyman? Thanks for joining the livestream, uh, but that's like one major issue. Alright, so right now, I'm just writing down in the patch, Dev Backup, Original Source, Videos, boom. That's done. Okay, now I'm just gonna go ahead and rename the patch notes really quickly. 1.30. And... I'm just typing in today's patch notes because toward the end of the livestream or later on today, I will update the GitHub. And what's today's day? August 31st, so it's almost the end of August. Wow, August flew by. Um... Okay, so I'm just gonna put this, Namco Theaters. Or I could actually do this cuz I, I don't know if I'm doing other spaces today. Namco Theater. Added Original and slash Custom Screen Content. So that's basically that for that. Um, then I guess we could take some pictures so y'all guys could see later on. So I'll do that now. And I'll kinda show you guys on how I usually take my pictures or you guys could probably see, but I use a Prodigy Target Manager and basically it takes like a memory screen cap of the screen. So I'll just take a little, like a few of it or a few pictures. So that's boom, that's one right there. Alright. I could do like one, like in the corner. But yeah, so Namco Theater is basically done. What I'm gonna do now is just uh math highlight this. This is a fun, this is a cool function what I, which I usually like to use and this is how I usually export pictures um from the PlayStation 3 this way and it gets them in basically uh the highest quality, I guess, quote-unquote possible without like, you know, using like capture card devices. Um... Let me just go here, Patch Notes. Alright, and then I'm just gonna place the images here. So if I go back into, right here, you can see all of the images we just took from the PlayStation 3. Yeah, and I know it's not compatible with CFW. Yeah, for online, um... Online will work for official firmware possibly, but for Hen and um, Kex and Dex systems. That's the overall goal is to have online basically working for like all platforms and possibly RPCS3, but the way how uh PlayStation home is, um... Home is like heavily integrated with PSN. So unless like RPCS3 or you know, any of the online developers figures out like the original way on how to like fully patch out PSN because um, stuff like possibly like clubs and clans won't work without PSN. So there, there's like some key functions that needs to be patched out and ironed out before uh like even going on the lines of trying to use RPCS3. But it'll be, you know, a dream and pretty cool to, you know, literally if I just got on PC, um, you know, if I had a good PC or anybody has a good PC, jump on PlayStation home, you could connect to players via from PS3 and PS, or excuse me, PC. Uh, that would be actually pretty cool. I wouldn't mind that at all. But um, yeah, so Namco Theater is pretty much good. Or have you ever tried a PlayStation Vita dev kit? Uh, no, I actually haven't uh utilized the PS Vita dev kit. I know what you're talking about. Um, you're talking about one of these and I'll kinda have my screen. You're talking about like those uh... I seen a couple like just online, but you're talking about the PDL uh dev kits where like there's an HDMI out. The way how these development units work, um, you always have to have them plugged in. But uh, I wish I had one of these. I do plan on uh getting a PS Vita PDL 1000 probably in the future just to collect. I own a... I own one of these. I'll actually go on YouTube. I actually did a video on one of these consoles. And I own one of the... Yeah, so this is my development unit that I actually own. Mine's came from Electronic Arts. Sadly, there wasn't like any rare builds on there. Uh, but I usually don't play on this console since uh it gets kinda loud and sometimes I don't want it to overheat. So only I turn this console on if I really truly need to utilize it, whether it be for PlayStation home or for another reason. Uh, but I usually just use a regular Dex PlayStation 3 while I record. Um, but yeah. I'm uh just toggle this button. I ain't trying to flip it off the screen. But yeah, I wish I had a PlayStation 3 uh or PS Vita. I also want like a PSP development unit, a PlayStation 2. I just wanna collect like a lot of development units, especially for the PlayStation console. But um, I'm trying to see what spaces I haven't really focused on or done yet in terms of screen links. For the life of me, I cannot get Red Bull Beaches. Um, I don't even know. I'mma try one more time, but every time I try to utilize this space, I always try to get like the original screen links uh fixed for this. And if I could get the uh screen links fixed today, it would actually be pretty useful because um, usually anytime when I do screen links, it's very easy for me to quote-unquote port them to like the online segment. Uh, so that's why I like doing these live streams too because any of the stuff I do, I can uh, whatchamacallit? Yeah, I got basically the videos working. I'm trying to get the videos working via for Red Bull Beach, but for some odd reason, they never pop up. I don't know if it's a issue in terms of me not renaming it, but uh, or like renaming the scene right, but I'm going to try my best. Uh... I'm going to try to use... What I'm gonna do is try to, alright, so... I'm gonna see like how Red Bull Beach looked back in 2010. And thank God for your PlayStation home cuz they had, like this person or Carla Birch, um, she took a mad like ton of like high-quality videos or at least at 720p cuz a lot of like the older videos, especially pre like 2010. Um, or just any video on YouTube, you know, it was like 480p, but it's nice to have any reference to basically any videos cuz it helps restore online um a lot or just even the offline client because it gives me kind of a reference to go off of cuz uh sometimes all of these spaces um didn't... Or I didn't even visit. But I do remember Red Bull Beach. Alright, so this is definitely the Red Bull Flutag Highlight Film and I just even seen it in logs like um, it's pretty cool. Like uh, let me see. I'm trying to see something really quick. It shot out like that error. Yeah, it says failed to download. So it's even kinda cool like the way how Red Bull, it basically had this thing running off a uh... Thing, so this is like one of the original, whatchamacallit? No, I'm sorry, you have to copy that link I sent. Okay. H4G borrowed one for someone. Maybe you could ask him for a dev kit. I probably could get a development PlayStation Vita unit, um, if I look on eBay or I, I just know people who probably would sell it to me, but I don't have like the funds to actually chuck out um... Something like that. Uh, but what I'll do now is, let me see, Red Bull... Uh, Flutag 2020, 10, or 2010. I'm gonna just find any Red Bull like 2010. Alright, this looks pretty wanky. Alright, so this was like from 2010 and this is from the official Red Bull website. So what I'm gonna do is use this janky-ass website. I use to convert videos really quickly and this is how I usually do it. I wonder if this is literally the exact same video. Let me see if it's at 480p, that will kinda tell me. Oh no, it's actually at 1080p, so that's what's up. Alright, what I'm gonna do now is just download this video and hopefully I could get the screen links to work cuz last time uh it wasn't really working out for me. 1280, I'm gonna go with the 480 by 270, even though it probably will look kind of a little janky. Uh, cuz sometimes some of these spaces has some issues. Alright, so right now, what I'm going to do is um... First off, I need to figure out where to help... Like the video screen links or where it's getting called from. So I'm gonna use... I'm gonna find where the video downloaded. So, okay, this is the Red Bull video. And I gotta figure out what I'mma call it. So I'm just gonna call it Red Bull Video 1. I guess something basic like that. It doesn't have to be uh official. Um... Right now, I'm going to look at the local scene list cuz I honestly don't remember. It's probably literally called Red Bull Beach, but I just wanna make sure. Yeah, it's literally called Red underscore Bull Beach. And I'm just trying to track down where to figure out. Alright, so Red Bull Beach, Screen Content. Alright, so it clearly looks like I've, yeah, you could see I've attempted at this before. RB Beach Screen, so right now I see it's already calling, well, from another source. So it was still stuck with the old IP addresses. Um, so at least I could get that right. I gotta set it to offline or at least to read from the App Home directory. So I'm just gonna plop that right here. So Environment and then slash Red Bull Beach, alright, Screen Content. I guess I'm gonna just have this right here. Alright, so that's boom. But I'm gonna also verify with the dot scene. Let me just look in here, Video, Video Screen Type. So... Alright, this will actually tell me. Red Bull Beach Screen. Screen ID and screen name, so... Let's see if it actually changes if I relaunch the space cuz I honestly don't think it will. Cuz it says RB Beach Screen. Unless the screen name is on. Yeah, so one of the screens, I don't know if it's playing. Yeah, they're not playing, so... Maybe it's literally RB Screen Beach 1. Alright, and then save. Let's see if it changes now because last time I think I did it, um, it didn't pop up. I can't figure out how to go to Kex to Dex. I volunteered in a local charity shop and broke, it broke in net. I can't figure out how to go to keks to decks. I volunteered in a local charity shop and broke a broken net Yorozai came in but whoever was in the shop on the day I wasn't broken. It was a damn bro. That is pretty crazy. I would like to even if it was a broken net Yorozai system um. They actually go for a lot. I don't know why. I wanna net Yorozai but those systems cost a lot. I don't know why um the video is not working like I am actually shook. And uh what I was saying about for keks to decks, if you're on keks uh you need to be on at least version firmware or firmware 4.80 um 4.84 because I know 4.86 you'll need to downgrade. So if you're on like 4.85 or 4.86 you need to downgrade since there isn't no Dex firmware but you could watch my video here and um I made a video or this is any reference you could either like look up a tutorial. Uh and it's not hard to do it from keks to decks. It like takes 15 minutes if you're on like uh 4.84. You basically just need to go into Rebug Toolbox, dump your EID root key. I mean broken up. Oh, and bits? Damn, then what the hell? Did it have like a disk in it or something? I honestly don't know why um the screen is not working. Image. I'm gonna see even if the image could pop up. Screen content. If anyone could get the screen working, if they're watching this before me, please let me know because I honestly and I usually know how to fix screen links but for this one unless the calls are getting called differently in the scene. And it's actually wrong then I don't know. Yeah, it's like I'm literally not too sure because it seems like both screens right now. It's like trying to download it. Yeah, okay, so if you're on 4.86 uh you can do this then. Or actually cuz I was actually uh helping somebody out the other day on how to downgrade your console. And you could downgrade to a lower custom firmware. So I recommend if you're on 4.86 Rebug, if not, go into that. And then you could watch this even though this is for like 4.84 um it still will work on anything. I don't understand this. Cuz I'm looking at the screen links and uh let me see. There's only literally two links that is getting called. RB Beach screen. Unless literally the screen is getting called. Unless both links are getting the only thing I could see like the plausible thing is cuz it says screen one and two basically, right? But it has the same screen ID. So what I'm thinking, okay, well, this is a better issue. Excuse me, this is like a better issue. I think I figured it out. Cuz now it's giving me a issue via with the texture. Meaning A that this uh picture I'm using is way too high quality and I could tell by that um. Yeah, this is like 1500 by 1000. So what I could do is we could try this video I have in here and I probably understand this now reading a knit or reading it a little bit. So the way how I guess Red Bull works is reading from two screens at once. So I can't um what you call it. Hey Naguto, hope you're doing okay. Thanks for all your work you're putting. Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Naguto with a controller here, you're talking 500 euro a file for a net Yorozai. Yeah, I've seen not Yorozis go pretty much a little crazy on uh what you call it. But thank you uh sugar blossoms. Yeah, but like those now your roses bro on eBay, they be boosting a hell lot of the prices. So let me um actually I'm kinda curious like if I go on eBay really quick. Net Yorozai PS1s. Like I bet you if I just type it in, yeah, some dude wants 1500, $7,000? Hell no. Bruh, I am not yo. They no way in hell I'm spending that type of money. What? Why is it? Sorry, we unable to play this video at this time. Alright, so what this could mean to me? That's a better error than before though. Let me check logs uh cuz it will actually tell me why though. I'm gonna get this video to work. Alright. Cannot open stream uh negative two encoding error. Is it encoding? Let me see. Let me see if this video is different from this video. This is 16. I wonder if it's cuz it's like two, 426 by 240? 426 by 240. We could try this video. If this video works, I'm gonna probably get both videos but I don't know if it's uh the same one. Cuz I could toggle both videos. Alright, so this is 3 minutes and 30 seconds. I don't know which video I used before. This is 34 minutes long. Maybe it's cuz it has like a size cap. I'm not even too sure but I don't think uh video. I don't know if it's a memory issue. I bet you, I could bet you this video will work versus the other one though. Alright, so Red Bull Beach video one. Hopefully um it will work now at least cuz at least I'm getting a better. Wait, what video you're using? Is it okay to link a petition for PlayStation home for PS5? It's been circulating on Twitter. I mean, sure, you could do that. I don't mind. Alright, so we got the video running. So the video is now running. Let me see if I'm getting audio though. And um I'm going to run speed 90. Alright, I'm gonna fly through this damn map. I shouldn't have. Holy hell. Let me turn this down to like run speed uh I'll do like eight. That's better. But yeah, the video is now working. I don't know if this was like original one but I am using this. Uh but we at least got one video working. So what I can do now is where's the the damn patch I have? Alright, I'll just create a backup. Red Bull. Yeah, for some reason I I guess I had to like cuz for the life of me, I did this for like two to three live streams but I'm pretty glad now I got this to work. Cuz now I can archive this um make sure I can rebuild this and specifically save this uh video on my backup server. And then uh we can I can actually import this video once, you know, via for online too. So that's cool. So I'm gonna call this Red Bull uh original source video. I'll actually just uh put all of these videos in here. Uh if I ever have to go back from here. But let me go into user directory environments. Red Bull underscore beach. And screen content. And I'll read back in the chat if you guys are actually um talking in there. Environment. Okay, so that's looking good. Screen links, boom. And let me just make sure. Alright, so Red Bull Beach looks good. Let me go open back up um here. Yeah, I'll save it. Alright, and I'm gonna just say this. Red Bull Beach added original slash custom screen content. I'm just say 2010 Flutag uh showcase video cuz I remember like the name of it. Alright. Then I know for Namco Arcade was uh Ridge Racer 7's um showcase, Namco Showcase. I don't know actually for the screen links via for, oh wait, let me I need to look back in the patch cuz I can uh decipher this a little bit better. I don't even know where I have it at but let me read the chat really quick. There's a PS4 dev kit on eBay, really? They probably is for like a thousand dollars though. I know people are already gonna snag it. Yeah, it's $1,400. It's a duh. Oh, there's actually two. Oh, there's a Vita development unit. So there's a Vita development unit for $750. If anybody wants to be if anybody wants to give me a late birthday gift, somebody cop this for me. I'm kidding though. Uh but Bruh said a PS5 dev kit. Bruh, I wonder if there's any builds on here. Running 5.53 release check mode based development. Uh this is pretty crazy though. It's a duh too. I don't know if there's a probably the activation is off on this system. Oh, hold on, there's some pictures at home. It's kinda crazy that uh development, yeah, 46 watchers. Somebody's gonna snipe this one too. Hundred percent guaranteed. This is like one of the older. This is the Pro Dev Kit. This is like the Neo. So this is like the PlayStation 4 Pro one. Uh yeah, usually development units looks are they look kinda a little bit brazy though. Let me see if there's any PS3 dev kits on sale. Oh, they got a development unit. $400. Five available, bitch. This may be something I'll look into a little bit later on. I'mma buy it. Naguto PlayStation home, Naguto character on PlayStation home is very interested in that video. Really? I try to make my home character look like me in real life. Uh but yeah, I think we're done with Red Bull Beach as of right now. I'm gonna um I kinda got sidetracked because I do like talking about development units but um I don't know exactly which space I want to really quote-unquote focus on. Um honestly, I don't know. We could try East Mall. I haven't done that. I know I haven't done anything for the East Mall. Anybody who uh played in EU home, let me know cuz I'm gonna go East Mall. Actually, this is like one of my favorite home videos. Uh the Winter Day Holiday Hallabaloo. This was actually showcased in the 2011 Winter Holiday Hallabaloo space. Uh and I'm getting kinda sidetracked on two ends though. Let me see, 2011 Winter Holiday PlayStation home. Unique Captain Fathead. Okay, so that video was actually playing, bro. I this is I actually started PlayStation home and this was like one of my very first spaces I've been to. Uh which was I didn't get to see Central Plaza or anything like that but I did get to visit this space so Winter Holiday Hallabaloo was like really uh I really liked this space. But um here's the EU. I'mma buy it. Yeah, if you got the money, go for it. So here's Potamore V Me. East Mall. Alter Ego, Lucas Arts. I couldn't um try to get the screen links all working for this space and I don't know what I wanna do. Cuz now I'm like I'm gonna either toggle back and forth to two spaces. I'm gonna come back to EU mall. Uh but what I'm going to do really quickly is to capture that video because I really want this in the home. Cuz I I personally like this space. Let me go into MP4 to MP3. So yeah, this space right here was like one of my favorite spaces to absolutely go to. So this big ass screen right here played it. So at least that is a I noticed like if I probably look at the actual uh XMLs and stuff, all of the objects um you could probably restore. This was like an activity board. I remember I don't know if there was music playing here but I definitely know uh right here was like the winter floor. And I know like mad people used to glitch up on this like I call it like the Coca-Cola uh snow or a snow bear. So yeah, that's that. But yeah, they had like really I think this is when they were trying to initiate like events at least for 2011. Cuz I started playing home literally on Christmas Eve. Like I got my PlayStation 3 and the first game I ever played was home so. Sly Cooper. I was actually playing Sly Cooper the other day on the Vita. Sly Cooper is a fun ass game if anybody hasn't played. Wait, is this like a video down here? I don't, I don't actually know though. I'm trying to see like if there's like a Winter Holiday Hallabaloo glitch. I'm trying to see like what was in the back video. I could probably look at screen links and that will give me like a better idea but uh quest one. Seems like everybody liked the quest for their, everyone did the quest. Alrighty, so alright, I'm gonna really quickly try to knock out Winter Holiday Hallabaloo. Uh but before I do that, let me finish the patch notes cuz I know I like to get on like multiple things at once. But let me see here um dev backup Namco Theater. Tetsu video. Trying to see. Alright, so Tekken. So I'll just write this down. Tekken 6. Bandai. And then I believe this is Soul Calibur. None of this is actually like how is the activity board controlled? Um I could exactly tell you how the activity board is controlled. The activity board basically is a object in the game and um it probably would make calls to the server. Um basically asking or it will basically ask the end user to the game uh or make requests. So for example they probably had it running on Sony servers like via right here and it would be like let's say activity one was to like I don't know find the snow bear. I don't know, just something random like that. Um it will make the call to the end user and be like hey, make sure the end user, you know, is getting make sure the end user you know is getting these said request and initializing this as a game cuz the activity board itself uh if I'm assuming if you walked up to it it'll just be like a mini game and a lot of objects on home is like that um but with the activity board I honestly don't know like I can um I don't know if I could actually probably not because the freaking Lua will be encrypted more than likely like there's a lot of objects being called right now I could look and cuz I basically have a full database and um oh actually that one wasn't found in the server or in my backup I wanna see if any of these UIDs generate backup and then uh I can revert so this alright this is like a weird picture but um the hell is this it's only a hundred and sixty-eight kilobytes but something with a cat like pulling on a RC cable which I don't know how that has anything to do with this uh space at all but uh I guess that's there it's probably just some like script in game I'm I'm not even too sure but does Sony have the servers still up nah I wish if Sony has any of the like activity board like any of the main stuff from like SCE SEA is down um third parties may have some content but it's just like screen links but all of that stuff uh got terminated when uh home got ziklap yeah these are really weird images for some of these spaces like I don't know why I'm getting like dog photos uh I don't know if I saved this video but lemme just save it again so lemme see soul just wanna make sure uh came out on the PSP Soul Calibur okay I'm making sure I'm not tweaking because I was just adding that for the patch notes Soul Calibur alright so Soul Calibur is done right now what I'm gonna focus on is to get that one video up so I'm gonna call it I might actually want the original name to this video or what the hell it was called PlayStation home winter holiday halalblue I'll just call it this or winter I don't know how to spell halalblue halalblue alright so that's done we almost hitting an hour so winter halalblue so that is Gucci alright so that is done now what I gotta do is um I'm gonna go ahead and make the backup now so winter holiday and I know my typing always annoys people people say like I sound like I'm slamming my damn keyboard all the time alright twenty eleven original source video I wonder actually like what is this spaces uh I can actually figure out later this question but I wanna know what HDK version this is alright so lemme say winter whoa hold on I'll just say winter holiday SCE winter event that's where it's under okay so and I'm killing my keyboard are you using MX Blues uh what is that I'm not even too sure I'm gonna do a quick Google search MX Blues oh no I'm using oh my microphone no I'm using a well I got this at one of my old jobs uh this keyboard um it's just like some generic uh keyboard it's not like no real off or like some fancy ass one uh but it's actually a really uh useful oh no man I I don't even care if you ask you could ask all the questions you want um that's why I have these live streams to interact with you guys um yeah if you have any questions feel free to ask I I really don't care it gives me something to do um as I try to decipher this stuff in my head SE winner event there you go screen links so there's two boards alright so right now looking at this is calling uh HSML and it's calling leaderboard dot XML which is really odd and weird due to the fact that um usually screen links I mean I seen screen link called HSML but I never seen it called like another XML file so that's pretty interesting lemme see what version this is 1.55 beta 2 home alright lemme uh decipher this video screen type so there's like three boards though bruh there's one board that is not calling though island activity board I believe yeah it's not it's a XML though alright I'm going to just copy and paste the source because it's not really needed video I wanna see what the hell the other board is cuz I'm gonna switch it back I'm actually I'm going to probably keep it the same so what I'm gonna do is just call it uh I'm gonna create another folder called video environments let's see alright I don't know why that double pasted but that's whatever SE winter event video and hopefully what I'll do is space out the XMLs god forbid if I have to uh rewrite or retype some stuff and um yeah winter holiday halalblue and then hopefully this will run now alright so let's see what it does I don't know what the other two boards are there talking about but yeah thank you guys for tuning in thank you guys for the likes and all the love and support I appreciate that okay so I could uh this is odd that was not playing there though I know that for damn sure I could pull a sneaky bruh and uh that video is playing so that is good that the video works um but what I'm gonna do is winter twenty eleven alright lemme see there was the activity board I don't know if I could find this uh lemme see I wanna try to do something really quick hopefully I have this we probably have the damn activity board itself I could just literally put the picture of it I want the original one though uh but the original activity board will be playing where the it's in globals yeah all of this is getting called yeah this will all getting called from the old server bruh I'm gonna see uh what this does though what do you do says activity board model I literally don't know where I have uh the actual image to this though I wonder if there's like a DDS file if I drag this here uh cuz this will kinda it's gonna like make me go crazy because I know somewhere on my computer I have like the official uh alright so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna switch one of these out so leaderboard actually I think I know where the other board is going to so what I'm gonna do is just make sure uh or actually I just messed that up I was trying to switch like the boards so it could uh correspond with the image so right now uh one of these board I'm hoping I'm uh I'm hoping that island screen one will play the winter holiday halalblue video the big one so yeah as you can see here I can just run up to it um it's now to playing the official video that was here this will be the activity board but I'm trying to find that PNG and um I guess this is a leaderboard just so um what I can do I can just switch I'm gonna take a picture as I do this because uh I'm gonna go ahead and take a screenshot of the winter holiday halalblue thing I'm actually gonna wait till I took another picture but once I do that I'm gonna see if the second board will play the the other video and then I'll uh actually try to get the activities boards PNG to be on the other one so I'm just right now waiting in Prodigy Target Manager so I could take a better screenshot cuz I really don't like this one but yeah bruh he getting slapped alright alright that looks pretty good alright so I'm just gonna go ahead and uh save all PNG bop no I don't wanna I'm gonna cancel cuz it's making me uh I don't know it's making me I don't know uh why are they doing that I don't know why it was making those calls uh I'll just save that to five and then I don't know that thing weird but now I'm gonna go ahead and relaunch the space again and then I'm gonna dive in my PC wonder if anyone asked me questions anyone too I really miss home it was so fun and relaxing just to chill uh chill with friends uh in your opinion do you think Sony have all the iCar archives for servers for PlayStation home oh yeah probably PlayStation home probably has like all of the archives uh for home sorry went unable to play this video at one time what yeah home was fun though uh my favorite spaces on home was well I'll have it in my list right here what's my PC specs I'm not even too sure I know I have a I5 core but uh I have an OptiPlex 990 dough um I could probably put like a GTX 1050 or whatever it's called and play RPCS3 home uh but I'm kinda broke so and I usually like uh just playing on the PS3 itself but yeah here are some of my favorite spaces since we're on that topic uh Konami penthouse I I played all regions of home but uh I like Konami penthouse that's one of my favorite spaces um Music Cafe from Japan My Nation Races Backstage Pass was pretty fun uh Japan Home Central Plaza uh especially the winter version was really nice Fever Arena I liked Iron Market I like winter holiday halalblue uh Pig Vox Lab the playground I like Granzilla spaces a lot too glittering sands game game moonbase Head Candy I like the SE Home Square version two Namco Arcade Red Bull Iron Seaside uh Japan Homes uh Home Square and uh Granzilla's Hankagaki Lounge those are like my favorite spaces but I I have a ton of other spaces I do like but those that were like the main ones if I had to pick to play or chill at those would be the ones uh via for the list but I'm not too sure why um I'm trying to get two of the videos running at the same time though what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to use handbrake and convert this lemme see something really quickly I'm gonna try to use a handbrake to do the encoding for this cuz I want to and let's see if that will do that so let up the eyes I'm just doing something really quickly cuz I know the encoding for home is kinda trash sometimes dimension blah 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 alright that looks good to me start encoding alright so I'm just encoding right now for home and I'm gonna just call this Oogee or original I can't even spell but whatever it's just test stuff let's see if it fully encoded nope it's still encoding alright alright so I'm assuming it's done now hopefully both of these videos will play in the same space cuz if not that's okay all I would do is basically um yeah whatever what I'm gonna do is try to uh I'll could put something else but in the meantime I'm gonna go and SE Plaza Core Plaza I literally do not know I may have to look in one of my older bills okay so it really doesn't like that um it only likes playing on one board at one time uh but I'll put it in its original location then it's no biggie it ain't a problem that was for like leaderboards though so I'm just gonna switch this back to image and then uh I'll have this image I don't know what I wanna put there though I could um I'll actually uh use this to be honest home dot jpg I could put that over there and then see how that looks as a temporary. Alright, so the video is now playing. Alright, so in the background And this only has a DDS issue, uh failed to texture. Oh yeah, this space was really fly, I really liked it a lot. And they, hey Tiff, how you doing? But um, whatchamacallit, so in the background I just have this here. I could add some like more stuff back there, but uh I'll just have it temporary. But I'm really trying to figure out where the hell... I'm gonna try to like Um, Activity Board. This says Activity Board Models, so what I'm gonna do is try to put two to two together and let's see. I'm gonna do something really quick cuz this will kinda maybe help me. Alright, so we got a multiple people that has, let me see. Look through some Gamer Axe 23. Alright, so I'm gonna look through somebody's cash donation And try to hopefully find something in globals where I can uh find Activity Board. I don't know if it'll be a DDS or... Just gotta, I'm gonna take a risk though, um... I'm gonna look through like mad DDS files really quickly and hopefully I can find uh Something in the posters dealing with the Activity Board. Let me make this kinda large. Look at like a clean image of the Vita. This is definitely European cash. Yeah, I don't see anything. Uh this is gonna, let's see who else had it in their thing. Cuz Sakio's, alright. Cuz I want like the original picture, what time is it where you're recording? Um it's 10:13 AM via in the US, I'm in the eastern part of the country. I'm gonna check Sakio's though. User Directory cache, let me see, globals... Nah, bruh. I'm trying to like backtrack, let's see, who else is this? Oh, supposedly I had it, she... Uh let me see if I really did have it, cuz I pulled my data off one of my Playstation 3s and um... Let me see. Could have been a JPG file, I'm not too sure. I don't know, these are just like posters from like EU home when I used to go to EU. I really wish I had my data when I had, when I went to Japan home cuz, bruh. This is something from like Hudson Gate, sorry, we are closed, that's sad. If I can't find it now, um It's not too, I I can um Plug it in and later and then uh... Bruh, the billable, hold on, that looks like some... Literally, there was, it's gonna drive me nuts though. I'm about to look in another person's... I think I know where I have it at, I just don't know where I have it at, if that makes sense. Alright, but I could go to another space right now, I'm pretty much done and happy with SCE, blah blah blah. But um, we could take a look at the East Mall And I can uh try my best uh to replace whatever, whatchamacallit. But, in the meantime I gotta um get an idea of what we can do. This is like a newer version of the mall because it has Potomor, so it had a came after 1.70, VMe was here. They got this big screen right now, so LucasArts, and we got like 1, 2, we got like 2, wait, we got 3 panels, so we got these 3. I'm just trying to Figure out how can I port this. Alright, so first things first, what I'll do is... This is the East Mall, okay. I'm gonna look in the local scene list as it's up here, East Mall, I just wanna make sure where it's getting called from, the hell? I don't even see it. Shopping Mall East. It's called Marketplace 2. Alright, so I gotta dive into this. User Directory, alright, so I'm gonna go here really quickly. Home Internal. Home Internal SCE, Home Lobbies, Market, oh wait, not one, but two. Um... Screen content, so yeah, there you go. Alright, so it looks like it has everything called out for it already, which is cool. Mall Map Screen, Lua, I don't even know what that is, uh but all of these are getting called via from... MP Stuff, V Store. Yeah, it looks like the main ones are getting called from this, but uh... Except the Potomor store, which is weird. Alright, I'm gonna... I'm gonna find me a, I don't know, Playstation Home. I'm gonna just do a random like virtual item showcase, I don't even know. 75, yeah. I'll just use this one as a test video, um, I'll just be in place of something. So that's what I'm planning on doing, I'll I'll just use this as a test video because what I'm gonna do is Uh attempt, or make sure it could just go via right here. I'm not too sure if the encoding will be okay, but hopefully I'm just winging it. I gotta put my boy Magnus up there, alright, so we got that. And what I need to do is... Screen content video. Alright, so let me put this here. Filling, I'll just call this uh Magnus MP4. And then, I'll just put this here. Alright, so that's basically it via right now, let me open up this. Open Widget. Time 1 hour, time bot, yeah, I've been going a little brazy with this stream. Alright, so the video is up now. That's okay. Yeah, and audio work, so... I could do possibly like a couple of showcases, um so I don't know, I could just put stuff that is like home related themes. I'm gonna do like maybe, I'll do like 3 videos, so I'll just do this one. Alright, so... So that's that, and then I can do another one, so I'll do 77 really quick. So I'm just trying to kick them really fast, and then the main focus is, is trying to get one of these uh videos Uh showcase, but what I'm gonna do before that is just like get an idea of looking at like our real video of this cuz I'm honestly Not too sure, oh snap, I see, is this, was this actually using like real uh... I'm not too sure if they were, they were actually using posters up here. And I don't think you could walk through here, I know they just will spawn you like right here. I think the lobster, the object right here would be like the little lobster mania thing. And you could kinda see if you notice, uh if you ever looked at a Harbors Studio, this is basically Harbors Studio Looking out from the mall, so the mall, like, this is like Harbors Studio over here, and then uh I just noticed that, cuz I was like, the water looks very similar. Hey Midas Game, I have no idea, I may have to Google Translate. Russian to English. Master Project, doing a good job, oh thank you, I'm missing. I'm using Google Translate right now, so I do apologize, but thank you for the kind words. Alright, but um Let me look really quick, here. Alright, so we got the videos down-packed, what I'm going to do is hopefully find each video, no. Alright, so we're just gonna slap these in here, I'm gonna call them just like Magnus 2, Magnus 3 So it can uh toggle out, so this just be Magnus 2 Magnus 3, hopefully all of the videos will play without any issues and it will just be like back to back, so... Alright, so those videos should be playing right now. Alright. Right now, I'm just gonna... I'm gonna just wait here, make sure all the videos is playing without any issues, so I'll just toggle it right here, even though I know the audio Um will be backed out, but what I'm gonna do now is transition to, let me Close down this application since I am not using it right now. Um and I'll call this SCE East Mall. Wait, what? I'm so confused right now. I can't even type right now. So... I'm just trying to create a backup, but um, what I'm going to do is I'm gonna look actually in one of my older builds really quickly. Um, Home Backups, let's see. I don't even know once the, yeah, somebody builds are like older than, cuz I have like multiple builds I go through. I'm hopefully trying to find right now that Activity Board because it's going to drive me nuts. Please, just be here. No. SCE Plaza Station, that gotta be the hub though. What? Bro, it literally says Activity But Hub. I I literally do not know where the hub is at, it's gonna drive me crazy. Uh Random Death Pictures. Clothing, Skil Links Repo. Maybe it's here, no? Yeah, there go the Activity Board, there you go, alright, I know I wasn't going crazy cuz I remember uh I just remembered me pulling stuff, and I was like, yeah, this is definitely needed, so Um, really quickly, I'm gonna go and um Alright, that's the second video I think that is playing now. Alright, we're gonna go back to Holiday Hallow Blue really quickly, and I'm going to... Let me just drag this over here, alright, so I'll come back to this. SCE Core Plaza, nope. Winter Event, Image, alright, bop. Hold on. Alright, so right now, let me just reload it one more time. "Hey Nagato, just bought a new Vita on 1000 from Japan and gotta run an Enzo, thank you for the help, recently I put a white slim." Oh, no worries. "For some reason, in Rebug Toolbox, it says Kex the Dex function not available, install Rebug Rex." Uh what firmware you're on? "Hey, do we still need a Dex PS3 to run this, or is there a real PKG?" Um as a real, uh as of right now, you still need a Rebug Console Or like a development unit, for example, uh because there isn't, there isn't like an official way to run this on Hen or Kex, but um I got the Activity Board up, which I am pretty happy. But um, let me see. Somebody had, well, but yeah, for Cosmo, if you're on Rebug Toolbox, what firmware version you're on? Cuz you may need the right correct version, cuz if you're on 4.86, uh here, I'll actually send this to you. Use this version, if you're on 4.86, use this version of Rebug Toolbox, but uh you need to make sure you're dumping the correct um Like, when you dump your EID root key, make sure you do have the correct Rebug Toolbox. So... Yeah, then you're on that, uh, but if you're on, are you on Rebug Firmware as well for Kex? What I need to do right now is... SCE version. Dev backup. Oh, I already have that, so what the hell? No, where did I put that at, image? Okay, uh, but I don't even think I put that in the patch itself, so I only did Red Bull Beach. And I need to do, uh... I need to do one to Holiday Hala Blue, so that's what I'm doing, really quickly. I know it's image, and then I created... Video. So, should go something like this, and... I'll just keep both in there. And, I'll just drag this here. Alright, so, the source is good, so One Today Holiday Hala Blue is now done, so... So far we did three spaces. Hala Blue 2011. Added custom screen link content. Or, original? And I could just put, uh, original. Alright, so, that's that. And we're done with that. I'm grateful, I'm going in my next child now, it's a, bruh. That's crazy. Timebot, thanks for your answer, tested this on my PS3 some time ago. And now I follow YouTube and Discord and wait for it to any kind of beta finish. Oh, that's what's up, um, when it comes to like, online stuff too, like, the reason why, um, I've been working... Like, I haven't been doing a lot of live streams as well, um, I've been busy with some, a lot of stuff in real life. Plus, I've been working more on the online aspect of this, because, um... Kind of the offline thing is just something for the community, and, um... Since things are like, basically leaked now, uh, it's just for like, preservation. That's like, the major thing about this, um, just preserving home data like, properly. And I'm trying to just restore its like, original functionality. Uh, at least for like, the offline client, for you guys, but like, especially for the online portion of this stuff too. But, online, the goal is to have everything via working for like, Hen... Kex Systems, debug, development, and possibly for official firmware. Um, but, there's nothing like, a ETA or like, estimated time, and I wish I could just be like, hey... PlayStation Home Online is coming out such-and-such date, and, yeah. I wish I could do that, but in terms of like, reverse engineering, and there has to be like, a lot of testing going on, um... Cuz, we, like, me and the team, we take home like, very seriously, so we just don't wanna release... Or re-release, you know, a online client or like, a function to you guys, and it's like, half-assed. Like, you know, servers are down, and, you know, it takes a, a while for us to test and do stuff, since the team is primarily small, and, um, yeah. But, what I'm gonna do now is transition from that, we're going to go ahead and... Wait, I'm confused. Alright, so what I'm gonna do now is go back into messing with... The East Mall. I just gotta follow, find the file location, because the way how like, home internal stuff, there's like, so many sub-folders, it's, uh, kinda wonky. So... I wanna know what version of East Mall I used. 1.80, oh hell yeah, this is like, really late East Mall. Um, yeah, like, 2013, I'm even seeing it from VMe stuff. Screen content. Okay. And, uh... What I'm doing now is just creating the subcategory folders, because, uh, it's kind of a pain to work with this. So, it's just easy for me to just slap the information, so Home Internal. Even though I want, I could type it out, I'd rather just copy and paste, so I know for sure, uh, when I upload the patch, it's in its correct directories, and then I usually test the patch itself... Uh, before I upload. Marketplace 2. Marketplace 2's extension is the West Mall. I'm not too sure if I'm doing the West Mall, I may do it like, another day, uh, but... Not too sure. Marketplace 2, Screen Content. Alright, and then we're gonna create one called Video, and we're gonna just dump everything into Image, so... So, let me, uh, alright, so we got all the videos playing now. Alter Ego. What I'm gonna do now is, I'll just cancel some stuff out. I'm going to, um... Kinda getting an idea, so this was like, four years ago, so, yeah, I reckon this will be like, the best one to go over. So these are just pictures of it. Oh no, it's actually a video. VMe. Threads. I could do something for Threads, Oscar, yeah, this thing right here would, uh... This object would, uh, actually spawn. Would this like, nah, it doesn't have it, probably cuz the object is MDO. Oh, it's East and West Mall, okay. Drop Science. I just wanna get like, the overall feel of this. Lockwood. Estates. Alright, so... I have some stuff we can utilize. So... I gotta look in through my resources, since I'm, uh, I kinda got like, an overall vision, what I wanna do. Um, I'm not too sure which cache is from EU. Um... I could try this, actually. Global. Is this 1280 by 720? I'll actually, um... Is this like, the main folder? No, it's not. I didn't even make an image. I'm going to... Just... Not globals. Just trying to get an idea of where I wanna start working into. Alright, so this looks like the main one, okay. I'm gonna try to find pictures I think resembles around the whole damn space, or at least somewhat, so, we got the Lockwood one right here. That could be for like, um, just a Lockwood... Thingy. And what I'm gonna do is just try to find where they're calling Lockwood. Hopefully, um, it's getting called from the correct space, cuz if not, uh... I don't know, so hopefully Lockwood is getting called, and, um, I could just work on like, one section and just try to... Put... Yeah, I'm not too sure why that one didn't pop up. I don't know if it's taking time. Wait, I'm getting confused. Yeah, it didn't like that. So, what I have to do is... Ah, wait, 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 no, that's my bad, I'm not too sure. I see why, um, because I didn't take out the Lockwood, I just wanna put everything into Images. What I'll do is this though, cuz I'm gonna... I'm gonna take out that. Wait, I don't know if I saved. Or maybe it still didn't like it, I'm not too sure though. MP Lockwood. Screen ID. Alright, I definitely probably gotta look at the dot scene, because I don't know where it's calling it from. This is an issue sometimes, cuz sometimes, uh, when they do the screen links, they never, um, really, I don't know how to say it. They don't label it in the correct format, I like it, so... Alright, that's off. And, I think I deleted that, or, didn't delete it, I accidentally did that out. So, right now, I'm just trying to, I'm probably gonna have to get all the scene names originally and see where it's referenced from, because it's not popping up. Only one of them popped up, which is good, but, uh, I'm trying to get the original name, so Marketplace 2. And probably, uh, they did change it, cuz it looks like, um, just using something else. Video screen type MP4. Video screen type MP Near Entrance, so... Yeah, MP Near Entrance is not even a reference. So, right now, what I'm going to do is... I'm going to see what image this is, so I'm gonna just put like, some fake ass image, I don't even know what it is. So right now, I am going to just try to get any random image, it really doesn't matter, um, I want one that's like... I'm trying to think what is a EU person's like, cache. I'm gonna try Mats, I don't know. Nah, I don't... I don't know who was actually from EU that, uh, whatchamacallit. User Directory Cache. Global. Alright, we could do Andy. I don't know why, uh... Alright, so, that should be fine. Hopefully, um, that Toy Story image will pop up, and it will kinda give me a thing. Hey, what's up, still nothing about the servers? Um, in terms of the servers Frost decks... For online, it's being worked on, and you probably hear like, the trash man outside my house right now, they dump the trash, but, uh... Basically, for the online servers, we are, there has been some progress, and what system I'm playing on, I am playing on a PlayStation 3, but, uh... Still nothing, but yeah, via for the servers, there's nothing, um, you know, something we could showcase as of right now, since everything is like, internal. And basically, um... You know, until we get like, a lobby going on, uh, there wouldn't be like, an official showcase, but there has been major progress since, uh, online test too, though, I could say that, but I don't wanna get too much in detail. But the thing is, every time, uh, like... With servers, we don't wanna have like, a set date and like, make a fake promise, so people will be like, hey, it's coming out such-and-such date, and then, yeah. I didn't even know it's 1 hour and 45 minutes, holy hell. Um, I'm still having a little bit issues with, um... I'm having issues on detailing what screens is for which, because it's not popping up. Almost... Wait, bruh, hold the hell on, dude. I already see my mistake, that I literally forgot to put the letter S, maybe this will work now. This could just be me having a minor issue. Alright, let me just... Hopefully this is the issue, and, uh, yeah. No, maybe. Failed load texture, hold on, that's, that's pretty good, at least that's something... What do you mean you failed load? Bruh. Alright, at least it did pop up, though. Oh hell no, I didn't wanna cut all that out. Alright, let's see now. I don't think the textures should fail, because this is coming from like, real data, bruh. I think it's failing because it's calling other images, and I, it's like, what the hell are you doing? There it go, yeah, I figured that's the issue, so, there is sort of progress with that. What game engine is this? Uh, this is, well, PlayStation Home, uh, but... Why can't I think about what engine PlayStation Home used? It's not Havik, that's for something else, PlayStation Home game engine. I don't wanna say Unity, but I don't think... I should know this. I forgot what literally game engine, I'm about to Google this. PlayStation Homes game engine. It could, I think like, the older versions of Home, like, really, really old, uh, use Unity. But I think, uh, the in-game Home engine may be an internal one, I believe. And maybe, I don't think it's Havik, cuz Havik does with something else, like, in-game physics, but I know Havik is in-game physics. But, uh, we got like, the little Lockwood logo here, which is pretty fly. What I'm going to do now is, uh, try to find me some... Other EU stuff. Wait. EU White Chronicle, that's pretty old. We can, um... Welcome back. But this is like, a little cool EU thing. Well, I gotta see which stores, uh, has these little posters and stuff. VMe. Cucumber. I'm just trying to get stuff we could possibly add. So what I'm gonna do to make this a little bit easier is just look for DDSs and, uh, pray to God, uh... We find some good stuff, and not just XMLs. Alright. I believe... I may not add everything, but, uh, I'd rather have like, more content when I do this. There's a bunch of Lockwood stuff, which makes sense, cuz Lockwood drops so much damn content in Home. PS Vita, Audi Sledge. Alright, I think I'm pretty good looking through this one. Hawk Kitties, let's see, cache, globals. Lockwood. Nope. Let me try IOs. Let's see, cache. Yeah, I think Havik with this. I think, yeah, more than likely with their own engine, uh, but I know- yeah I think Havoc with this I think yeah more than likely with their own engine uh but I know like I believe like a really old home use like Unity but don't quote me on that like I'm talking about really old home oh dude somebody had um spun land I'm just trying to look at like y'all guys is cashed on it this is where I usually try to pull stuff from I see someone clearly went to Japan home I'm looking at yeah these are like old Japanese home spaces for sure like this is Gran Zilla Hankaki guy lounge so I went to Japan home um Jake McSwaggan's I could check his shark yeah that's definitely 1.86 I don't domo Yakland I can't oh I really can't tell this looks like US cash though the hell is this picture important notice oh nah this is just saying like the clubhouse threads yeah this looks like US home though North America yeah Shears Homegrown Labs yeah this is definitely US I can tell I kinda like this one too I'm gonna toggle uh where is Lockwood uh just go ahead and copy this source I could just copy this source over and over again alright so that's done I got a failed texture thing though have you ever thought about creating a standalone version for PlayStation home um basically what that is though that probably could run into some legal issues with Sony uh but the quote-unquote PC version of home is just utilizing uh and what the hell something's getting something's getting aired out but uh with the PC only version uh you could use just like our PCS3 yeah that could lead into like legal issues and stuff like especially if you try to profit off of that yeah like use actual like uh massed tomatoes that can give you issues something's getting called um I don't even know what this space is though what's it furniture I think that's decorations I don't know why is it oh probably this is the reason I don't know if they got some furniture well we could test this one always loved the PlayStation home like that little noise like hey hold on that little noise right there uh is nostalgic should've took that to like a ringtone somebody called me but yeah thank you guys for the likes thank you guys for uh watching it's hopefully um this is somewhat entertaining to you uh cuz I hopefully I don't bore anybody failed to low texture I've see this is the thing about doing screen links it's like uh I have to take heed I don't know if it's a memory issue that we're running into or it's just like uh what is the what is the problem Deco maybe I don't know if it's a let's see from what it looks like memory seems fine wait no I think it's just cuz uh the screen links uh being it's trying to call the files but uh yeah we can leave that right here as a temporary file I'm not too sure what I wanna do here for the Andy's uh apartment we can uh I could just put more stuff here I'm just trying to look for I kinda like this stuff like Sony related um like products I could actually add that to here where Andy's I'm just trying to see um I kinda like this cuz I know Gran Turismo 5 was big back in the day I was actually um playing a little bit of Gran Turismo 5 the other day via on my PlayStation 3 and I was like wow I was having like a nostalgic trip uh cuz when I used to play PSN back in the day I used to uh play on Gran Turismo 5 and on well this is actually from this could go to the V me store um but I used to play Gran Turismo 5 and PlayStation home and those were like my spaces I would uh mess with Billabong is Billabong here this cache is really good because it has like a lot of EU stuff My Nation Racers I remember that was big in EU servers Lockwood Security my decor we could put that here I just wanna make it look full Little Big Planet I know I've seen some LBP stuff in cache data before Demon Souls I don't know if I have like I see the thing is cache data is not really labeled so it's like uh I don't know Final Fantasy teaser trailer alright we got some V me stuff coming through so we could work with this was pretty good though coconut dodge let me see what your guys are probably saying in the chat uh bro how do I convert my ISO files to folders my PS3 doesn't read uh ISO files um what you could do is yo dude can you make over the PS3 hand I'm having trouble uh can you explain what type of trouble you having in terms of hand but uh via for ISO files if you use something like Winwar prints new uh what you could do is like have Winwar and look in ISO file so I'll I'll actually show you what I mean really quick since I know I have some uh PlayStation 3 ISO files on my PC I'm in the meantime so like uh for example right let me just go to my desktop if you have like Winwar installed on your PC PGS3 let me go cuz I have a bunch of games alright so for example uh you can see how my games are all in ISO format um I'll just use I don't know Gran Turismo 5 for example if I go here and open with Winwar what you can do is literally um all of the game contents in here so all you gotta do is just basically uh drag and drop out to the your PSC 3 or PC so you literally could just make a folder call I don't know Gran Turismo 5 right and you can just drag and drop here and then you could just transfer via with either USB or FTP but yeah that's essentially how easy you could do it and what I'll do for you my guy is I'll link uh Winwar so you you could download that yeah that but that's how basically it easy it is and I'm assuming you can check here on this website right here you could just download a 32-bit or 64-bit version of uh Winwar but what I'm gonna do now is go back to the screen link stuff uh and I'm going to find V me stuff so I noticed like three images that's getting called well I ain't trying to delete all that though so we got that going on alright so we could do this and then I think after this though my goal is to get maybe a good chunk of uh SCE mall done or at least the east mall and then I'll do not I'm looking for new free games online with that you could just like type in whatever game name you want and put like ISO for it most games are either in folder format already uh or PKG which I've seen online oh I put the wrong one though uh but at least the damn stuff is working for V me let me I feel like in one of my old uh thumbnails repo nah that's not that screen links it is some V me stuff I mean we could add that to sheet where is uh V me hold on I don't even see it V store I don't know what image I called but it's the wrong one yeah it's the 411 one so we got 212 I meant to use this one though alright no actually I did call that one so it was the Joker one I think I need not DDS and then uh we could do this one right here I just wanna make sure uh and then that is called correctly I just wanted to leave some stuff like done for the V me store then we can uh toggle back but yeah thank you guys or thank you the nineteen people who are watching and all of the likes I really you know appreciate that alright so V me should have the Batman photo the Joker like jokes on you alright we have that shirt on home actually and I remember uh it's one of the first shirts so yeah the V me store is looking okay right now um what I'm gonna go ahead and focus on I don't know we can actually leave the Toy Story stuff I could like make this poster what I plan on doing maybe just home related content and I'll put right here maybe some PSN related content which uh I'm down for that so what I need to do is MP near entrance near screen so yeah I think quote-unquote this one will be for uh I'll do this actually so the MP near screen I'm assuming is literally talking about the screen and I'm just gonna add some Sony related products whether it be like games or whatever because why not and I'm gonna go ahead and move that source via right here two three I don't know this damn redeem code is uh probably down movie what the hell is this though I don't know if you guys could see uh that's like redeem code what is movie actually share and discover maybe um any EU users know what that is movie PlayStation app activate movie what is that bring you oh so it's like a film thing alright well that's what's up I don't know if that's like the equivalent to their Netflix or whatever but alright well custom DDS files in this oh did I add a Gran Turismo cuz I wanted that alright that's done so hopefully now uh those screens will be getting done alright so what the hell is a Toy Story one did I switch um I mean I'm actually confused what did I do I don't know why that one uh oh well I see I actually um I know what I did oh wait what I'm just going to I know what I did I just accidentally switched uh switch them in and out so they should be working now alright but the entrance one I'm gonna go ahead and create I don't know maybe two three four and this is just gonna be like home related stuff but at least I know this one works but I'm gonna go ahead and switch that out but I don't know what's like really home related My Nation Racers is home related yeah cuz that was uh that's that just trying to get stuff that's I don't know home related I don't even know fam oh we can do this one I like that My Nation I hate when it does that I'm gonna actually take these two and we could slap it on here alright so we could do something sodium one related cuz I know a lot of people like sodium if these are DDS files uh yes they are I'll just put DDS at the end of the prefix since it's uh alright so these DDSs should be fine now so what should happen with I reload the space that should be flipped and all of the other stuff is there but yeah if you guys have any other questions you would like to ask me uh free fill or fee for that uh I can't talk free or feel free to ask but I'm kinda tired so I apologize for that um alright so we got the screen working now what does the alter ego space has I forgot let me alter ego PlayStation home was alter ego like for costumes I'm assuming yeah it looks like it's for costumes Yeah, it looks like it's for costumes. Yeah, sodium was pretty nice. What system I am on? I am on a Playstation three. I'm on my uh Dex unit though. But yeah, this is like real hardware where um. Are there any programs that can restore deleted Playstation three files? Um I'm really not too sure and depending on how many times you like. Overreach your hard drive or anything like that um with data management and I think you will probably have to dump your EID root key. Uh, I'm not too sure though. Let me see, restore PS3 deleted data obscure gamers? I don't know if they have some tool, but I know like there's a tool that basically uh. I don't know. I would have to like get back to you with that because there's like a way. I know there's probably a way, but it's like probably difficult as hell. To uh accomplish something like that. I know, I don't know if they have a tool, but uh. Alright, I need to find some threads clothing though. Diner dance. There's a lot of stuff for uh. I don't know what I could find for threads though cuz I'm not like finding really good stuff. Alrighty, um. Trying to think, BN twenty twos may be good. Oh, these are kinda. Yeah, I remember Grant's small PSP. Yo, that's pretty fly, some of these. Cuz this is definitely. iPad. I never had that actually. The dizzy rascal, that's pretty nice. I'm trying to see like if there's anything like related to clothing that I could slap into threads cuz if not, I'll port some other stuff. To uh Playstation home TV needs you. The hell is this? Home TV? I didn't even know that was a thing. Maybe that's just a EU thing. Seems like we're getting the same posters like twenty times over. No, these are some like Final Fantasy twelve posters. Which is pretty cool. It's kinda cool looking through this cuz it's like a time capsule though. Okay, um. Looking at this, uh looks like it's been repeated like twenty times over. EA DJ kit and it's like the breast cancer thing. Think that was for like the Drew Brees uh NFL jersey. I've seen stuff like the retro art. Retro art is like for like emulation though, I believe. They recently got hacked too, which is pretty sad. Wipeout HD. Alright, so what I'm gonna do is just port some stuff I already have uh. I remember, let me go to this repo. I love retro art. Alright, so I see a lot of stuff for threads and I'm going to just uh yeah, utilize that. Copy. And I'm gonna pop right there. Alrighty, so we got some stuff from threads. I know I couldn't find anything like really right now, but uh just to fill the space in, uh for the time being, we're gonna do that. So that's that right there. I'm trying to, where was the last one though? I lost my space. There was like one more, I believe. Not that one, not that one. It was like some, oh, there it go, like some Gothic boots for females. Alright. Alright, so that's done. Alright, so threads should be done right now for screen links. We're going on two hours, holy snap. Failed to load object. Alright, hopefully I'm not getting no memory issues. Everything looking, wait, why is this not loading up? Alright, I think it was just taking too long. Alright, that's done. There's this photo right here. Um where is the thread stuff though? That's what we gotta focus on. Alright, so the data stuff is here. Have you got? Have you got into the mini game inside of Playstation home like on the Uncharted shoot game? Um, I don't know if we actually have, do you know what Uncharted space it is cuz like maybe could possibly find the game and hopefully if we have it from cash data? Um cuz that's where we're getting all the data from. So all of the three hundred spaces, all of like the six thousand plus items and stuff like that. It's coming from people donating data. So if you happen to know anybody with Playstation home data, uh doesn't matter what build, whether um their retail development and all of that fun stuff. The more um data we have, the better the ability we can restore stuff like screen links, um objects, items. Like the more data the bit better basically. And um if you look in the link in description uh for this video. You can always check out like on ways on how to donate and how to join or like learn about the project and stuff like that. But uh threads's stuff is working now. Deco. Stuff. I don't even know what's a put here, bruh. Thing that's like for. Alright, we're gonna do another person's data. I'm gonna do Kates. Why not? Playstation home stores now is closed. Bruh, you know how lazy they are though? Like they deadass took the Playstation four? Like the background and they just put this little text. That's kinda sad, bro. He had nothing in here. Let me try EVOs. Bruh, he had anything. Dragonite, let's see. This looks like EU stuff though. Nope, this looks like America. Let me see DDSs and get a good idea. I don't know why I typed in DDS and it calls XML. Why? Nope. I don't even know whose cache is like a, like some people's cache is like a gold mine, like in terms of screen links and some people have like better stuff. That's why it's like. Everyone's data is unique though. Oh, really? That's what's up. Busy bees jail runs on a script, I believed. I believe. Sodium blue, bruh. Don't care, man. I may add some more Lockwood stuff if I can find it. He's actually really got like really cool uh PNG. The cocky guy or cocky machine. I wish we had that space like for like one point eighty. I don't know dude, like what is, yo, I wish we had these gym track jackets. I don't know exactly like where to look for stuff and that's like the hardest part is to trying to find uh. Stuff we can add or I can add. There's some V me stuff I could do. This person really liked Branzella though, but I'm trying to find stuff for like literally called the stuff, so I'mma actually try Toyokaios cuz I know he had two PS3s. Uh scenes, I believe. Nope, that's not scenes. Globes. Spun land. I don't even know, man. This is gonna be. Maybe it's in videos. I could try that, but sometimes it's like not always with videos like. Like I don't know, posters being videos for some odd ass reason. This is like some Konami stuff though. I'm looking at at some Japanese home. Maybe this is not the best persons to look to. I'm just gonna radical ours. I'm not too sure. It's a shame you can't convert the dev sodium to the orange top. The LOD must be different. I mean, if you use like something like Maya, I believe, and like you can like manually, I guess, a model, a three D model for. The orange development top, then I guess you can. Maybe hopefully somebody will have like the development top in their data. There's like a top I actually want that is uh. Radical arts didn't have anything. Let me try yours. Nary fires. Oh no, that's the profile, globals. I don't know, like seems like everyone's globals is like. Gone like or not what I'm looking for. I'm gonna try Adam up now cuz I know he had a lot of stuff. This is probably US though base, but that's okay though. Oh, this is actually, oh, what the hell? Alright, this looks like it has a lot of stuff, so we may get lucky in this one. Pulse. FIFA ten featured game. Alright. Instructions, host gaming. Oh wow, this is talking about like the in-game host stuff, which is pretty cool. Estates, serotonin apartment. We can add, wh- which the damn thing is for estates, I believe, not stuff. Alright, so we got some stuff for estates we can add. I could at least put one up just to make sure uh one of the screens. Alright, so let's try something really quickly, estates. I pissed off Deco, states, there you go. I'm gonna at least try to get two estate um pictures at least and look through. Make believe. Trying to see like another one that's showcasing like uh a space or like an apartment mag. R type command two, that's from IRM, I believe. Yep, IRM. Our IRM. In the sodium, this image for all the best stuff is image. In the sodium, the image for all. Really? What do you mean like the image? Like, hold on, I maybe not explain it, alright. Oh, this global cache. I wish we had like IRM. Ooh, this is like the Red Bull Beach stuff. What the hell? Eluma. Alright, hold on. I'm about to uh put this in. Red Bull Beach or not, Red Beach Eluma or whatever it's called. I'm finding a bunch of DDSs for this. Uh so right now, since I actually find stuff. I'm going to archive this cuz I didn't know, but this is pretty good for our online stuff for sure. It's like, I don't even know how many images, but uh this is pretty good though. These were like for like the little boxes for Eluma though. Alright. Yeah, I'm gonna need this definitely later on, so let me just copy. Uh screen link repo, I could call it. I'll actually uh, let me see. Let me uh, I'll put this into my little. Alright, so that's cool. And I'll even just put it in the pad, so I know, God forbid, uh I have some stuff. For later on. But uh back to looking for uh other stuff. Oh, this is like the wipeout furniture, which is cool. Wait, wait, wait. We can use. Alright, we can use some of this stuff though. Now available in estate store. Uh that's not like I need like the official like uh. This was a good, this was pretty much a good data to look through. It seemed like EU stuff though. Top Gun. I'm trying to find uh like stuff for like. Alright, I'm about to use something else. I'm about to use some old stuff though. Offline, screen links repo, the mall. At the hub. Alright, we could use. Alright, we could use this and the companions. We're gonna just port some stuff from the hub and then if I find it cuz I don't wanna like hold you guys up and be like, oh man, he's boring right now. Uh but let me go ahead and place this into. Cuz I could always resize, but um. Estates. We got like at least four images we can toggle back and forth from, so I'm gonna take out, comment out this line. Alright, so that's one and then it's like the plum tree village. I'm sure there's some other stuff I can find, uh just. Due to time, I don't wanna like waste. And something about Seven's Palace or Palace of the Seven Winds. I know that was a space that was utilized in home. I know a lot of people used to join there, so let me see if all of the estate stuff is working. Alright, so let's see here. Lockwood stuff is loading up now. I wonder if deadass, that is, I thought it was gonna toggle both screens, but um. That's just one screen now. MP Estates one. MP Estates one. I guaranteed you, I can guarantee you, there's probably something called MP Estates two, watch this. Yep, that's what I thought. So there's like two screens that toggles, so um what I can do is. Alright, what I'm gonna do is. I'm gonna cut these two from the bottom and then I'm gonna cut these two from the top. And now what should happen is both of these uh screens will pop up since I split them, so two images will just toggle back and forth essentially. And let me, give me some water. Alright, so. Or hopefully that was the goal. Unless I did something stupid. I'm actually not too sure what was the issue. MP Estates, maybe I loaded in too fast, uh, cause I don't know what's the problem. Cause I'm not too sure, cause it's reading from MP Estates two, so I'm assuming it should read from the second one. Unless it's not, which I would probably have to look into a little bit more. Um, but I'm gonna go ahead and. Let me see video. MP near entrance, near screen, near harbor. So there's one, I'm assuming this screen. I'm not too sure why that is uh having issues, but the one that's near the harbor um should be this one right here. So what I'm going to do is write or not write it down, but type or make the call for it. Home is just like heavily driven by XML. Like it's XML heaven. Alright, so MP near harbor. Uh, we can just use whatever we have, uh, cause I don't wanna. We could do some Killzone stuff. I don't mind that. Alright, so we got that. I don't know if I use this one. Let me see if I used it. I already used the minis. Um, I don't wanna reuse stuff if I don't have to. Killzone three. I don't know what else I wanna add. Uh, hotshot to golf video. So I'm gonna change that to that one. Let me see what globos has. I don't know if there's any PSN related stuff. I know somebody had. We do this one, why not? Don't care. Blizzos. That's like PlayStation related. Um, okay, so, bop. 406. Winter Bravo Television. I want something a little bit better though. Um. Oh, Little Big Planet. Why not? Little Big Planet two. I know, cause like in home, they heavily advertised uh what you might call it, Little Big Planet, which makes sense because uh. Why did it not copy? Or I don't think it did. For some reason, I think my co- I would box that controller by PC. Oh yeah, it did. Alright, so. Alright, I could cut this one. It doesn't have to be like each one, but at least hopefully the harbor uh entrance will work. Hey, I have a DCR 1000 with latest rebuild. Can I go online with it or not? Just wanted to know if I'm wasting my time trying to get connected to PSN. I mean, you can, uh, but I'm not too sure, like via what? PSN? Um, I don't, you can, I guess you could use uh, if you have like DCR LE firmware, uh, you can use uh, not PSN stuff, but let me actually boot up the official name. Oh, SA enabler. You could use SA enabler, but I'm not too sure if you wanna get your console ID banned. But uh, yeah, I've been online on my DCR before. When I play PS, play ISOs, maybe have you tested a disk and dump it as ISO? Uh, but Killzone is here. Uh, let's golf, so we got. We got some stuff popping up. Diddy. Alright, but uh, that's done. So stuff is looking more full right now. I don't know what the hell. Does anybody know for the EU, if they're watching, like Nari Fire, did they ever um have posters blasted right here, or this was just like dummy posters? I'm not too sure. I s- uh, maybe I assume, I don't think this is being called. Maybe it was though. Cause I don't know what this is for. I don't even know. I'm gonna just do a dummy test right now though, cause I don't know what this is calling. Not sure, but I could try to check it for videos. I think, yeah, cause it's calling, it has a weird name though to this, I believe. It says Etch A S Marketplace Entrance two, so. Yeah, you see? That's what I thought. Uh, so it is calling it. Um, we can mix it up though. We could, we could, we could spice it up. So like, I don't know why it was standing there, so. Then there's one, so I guess one is for the other one and other one is for that. So I gotta just get um some stuff getting called. I don't know what I wanna add here though, just yet. We could just add like home related stuff though. I don't mind like if it's. Alright, I do like this one, so I'm gonna. So entrance place two will have this. I'm just gonna try to get stuff that's like related around home, I guess. Which I'm down for that. Alright, so I'm done with that. Maybe BN 22s again. I'm gonna really scan through this, cause I want some like unique stuff to make it feel cool. Oh yeah, that's pretty nice. Yeah, BN 22 got a lot of EU stuff. But that's good. Alright, this is um cool. I already did the PSP GO one. It's like, I don't know. We could do this one, uh, but this is like resized. I have to resize it though. We could just mix it up, to be honest. Alright, this looks good to me, I guess. Alright, I remember, let's, let's see what I could do here. Alright, so we did a Little Big Planet one. This one I have to resize to like 256 by 368, so I'm gonna actually do that now with Photoshop really quick. I could do it with Paint, but uh. Add Neculatus and get the clap on GitHub. Oh yeah, no, no problem Killer Death. If you got any questions, uh, you can either feel free to hit me up on Twitter or my um what you might call it, my Discord. But right now, I am gonna take this picture. I wanna see if that website is actually still up. I doubt it. HomeTV. Dot, the hell is it called? At SCE.net. I don't even think. Home TV. Oh, so I guess it's some, the hell is this? Home TV episode one? So this was like some. Alright, let me see this. Home TV is a monthly show from SCE that will give you the latest news and events from SCE Home. Users can submit their own videos here. Alright, so that's pretty cool. I didn't know about that. Well, you learn something every day, I guess. Anybody wants to check out this video, then uh they can uh, oh, throw the email address. What? This was a pretty cool thing. Um, let me go to file really quickly. 256 by 368, 300 PPI, yeah. I've already done posters, are, try to inject manual posters, so all I have to do is just slap that poster. Hey, hey cloak, clockwork, or cloakwork, clock. Sorry if I pronounced your uh name wrong, but what's up? Hopefully you're doing good. Alright, so what I'm gonna do now is. Home needs you TV. Alright, so I'm just gonna save this as a PNG. I'm just gonna call it Home TV, whatever. Yeah, whatever. Alright, so that's done. Um, bop. Alright, so I just gotta toggle shit. Dot JPG. Wait, was it a PNG I saved it as? No, I just, it was a PNG. Excuse me, I'm putting the wrong one there and defeating the whole damn purpose. Alright, so that's there. Alright, so that looks fine to me for the most part. Now I'm gonna add this thing, the buzz JPG. Um, oh yeah, I like the PSP GO thing. I don't know if I had that before, but whatever. Then I'm going to do the, I don't know. I like the Motorstorm one. Alright, so these should be filled a little bit, and my controller just died or didn't die, just turned itself off. But let's reload this base and see how it looks. But yeah, thank you guys for the likes. Thank you guys for the uh, you know, viewership. If you guys really do like these live streams and uh you wanna support not only me, but just uh Destination Home Project itself, feel free to, you know, share this on your Twitter and, you know, get it widespread. Because possibly the more um people are in tune on what I'm doing or just a project, the more data possibly of just me and the team could get. And uh, it just helps overall, I guess. Alright, so those screens are working now. Alter Ego. I don't even know. I think Alter Ego is for costumes and stuff. I could just like do two images. I don't even know what the hell I have like costume related. That's like not Lockwood though. Let me um, I wanna see if my database will just like search stuff, Alter Ego. Oh wow, that works. That's some ugly ass math though. Yeah, it actually does. Yeah, we could do these. Alright, so. Alright, we got enough. I think I can uh import. I could have been doing this maybe. Alright, so. We're gonna do these, um, I'll do the king and then I'll do the queen. And then I'll just put. And then. Alright, so there's five right here. Put this ugly ass mask. Even though it's not like fitting the theme, um, I really don't mind it though, cause it's all from the same store. Um, it's pretty cool that we're still in memory. We could try to find stuff for. I don't know what will come up from stuff, but uh. Everything still has to load up, I believe. Alright, so Alter Ego stuff is now working. Um, let's see. I don't even know, cause uh, me. Alright, so home stuff. We actually got some stuff for it. We actually got some stuff for it. Well, we don't have to have everything for it but uh I'm pretty satisfied with two images. Where is decorations though? Or what is it calling? Alright, so Alright, so I'm cutting these two lines off about to put these uh two images here and then load it up. Alright, so Alright, got those two. Just gonna slap that into images really quickly and rename. And then we gotta get the last image which is called Mystery Box Main. I think it was a Japanese one but uh cuz I see like the Japanese text at the bottom. Alrighty, so let's see if it pops up. So we got that deco. Come on. Alright, we're looking good. Alright, so only thing I have to figure out is why in the hell this one not popping up? Um but basically um it's pretty much good to go I feel. So I'm gonna go ahead and take some uh screenshots now. I need to go back to uh I don't know why the other one is not loading up. That's what's uh confusing me. That one little screen though. What is this store called Estate? So lemme see if I can uh Estates underscore one underscore two. I believe I have that. I don't know where I uh Is it like? Hmm, I see it. I see the issue. I think there was a command line that was loading up from the old one. Hopefully that was the fix and uh yeah. And then what I'm gonna do is take or go back to uh what you might call it. Let's see if all of the stuff is working out. Alright, so that's done. So yeah, everything looks fine. Everything's under memory by the way too so Alright, so everything looks pretty much good now. At least it looks more alive. Cuz I I hate having spaces without screen links now cuz I got so used to just working on it. So I'll just come here and take some screenshots or save it for you guys. I wish I could restore it. And then I'm gonna go back to not Konami. I'm gonna go back to Winter Holiday Hallaballo. Take another better picture cuz I didn't have the activity board showing. And yeah, so what I'm going to do is now I'm gonna go ahead and run over here. I'm gonna sit at this campfire site. Alright. So what I'm gonna do here is go into the development stuff stuff. User Directory environments, uh Home Internal, Home Lobbies, Marketplace 2, Screen Content, Images. Or actually, I'll just go into Screen Content, slap everything in here and everything is good. Okay, so Now lemme go here really quickly. SCE. Shopping Mall East or So we got the East Mall. Yeah, so that's basically it for the most part. Alrighty, so I think we're good to go for the most part. Uh we've completed a lot for this livestream. So we did about four spaces. We got Rebel Beach done, Namco Theater, uh the East Mall. Right now I am just uh going into here really quickly. I'm gonna go and uh trying to find the East Mall actually. I'm just trying to keep a backup of some stuff and yeah. But yeah, this livestream was pretty fun. I didn't think I was gonna do this much. And lemme just back this up. But yeah, I didn't think I was gonna be live streaming for almost uh three hours. So that's crazy. Um But yeah, I think I am done here. I'm pretty happy uh and this patch will be out for both the PlayStation 3 and RPCS 3. I will actually have the GitHub if you guys are in the Destination Home chat. Um the GitHub will be released and if you guys come back here a little bit later on in the comment section down below, I will actually have like a updated uh pinned comment and it will have like patch version 1.30 for you guys to download. But um yeah, next livestream. I'm not too sure when I'm gonna do it or how I'm gonna have it or what spaces I'm working but I will actually have like a due date or basically just time uh when I do it. I don't I'm not too sure if it's gonna be in the afternoon or mornings but uh yeah. But thank you all for leaving likes. Thank you guys for all the support once again. Uh but I'll be signing out. Thank you guys for watching.